Okay, now you guys ready?
Yes.
We'll have a moment of solid meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. All right.
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To call this meeting the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval with our county administrator, Renata McClure. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning. We have 11 exonerations for $1,926.51 minutes from November 24th, 2021. Vouchers General County Fund, $28,439.56, 911-391-79. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,0257.55. Camp Muffley, $79.70. Mason Dixon Park, $5,1220. Recreation Levy, $56,529.99. Purchasing Card Vouchers General County, $19,219.26. Magistrate Court, $30.56, 911-1,075.92. Chestnut Ridge Park, $209.70. Camp Muffley, $630.22. Mason Dixon Park, $240.41. Assessors' valuation, $308.81. For a voucher total of $108,925.67. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for December 1st, 2021. And itemized statement of services for fiduciary Commissioner George Armistead.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Separate fiduciary items?
Yeah, sorry. We also have an objection to the settlement filed in the estate of Mary Jane Simpson Limley Walls.
What is the commission's pleasure?
At this point, I don't feel there's any actionable item for us. The objection that was made is not actually to the settlement, but things that may have occurred prior to the death of the decedent regarding the possible destruction of a will and other items that happened during the decedent's lifetime. So at this point, the actual first and final settlement that's been filed has not been objected to the actual number, so I don't feel that there's really any action we as a commission need to take. The allegations that are being made with the objection are more for a circuit court matter.
Okay. So we do not need, the motion is not required?
Oh yeah, my motion would be that we don't need to take any action on this estate and allow the clerk to do what they do.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Any other separate fiduciary items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Introduction to new employee personnel changes.
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, I don't see any on the agenda. Comments from the public. We're now open to comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to come forward and to address the commission, come forward and provide their Okay, quiet, quiet crowd this morning. I see none, I'll go ahead and close the comments from the public session of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is presentation by Sheriff Perry Palmer of the Tax Lean Sale Recap. Perry Palmer and our chief tax deputy, Kelly Palmer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are presenting you the recap collections for the 2020 delinquent real estate taxes and also the list of properties sold at our 2021 tax lien sale as they will appear in the Dominion Post.
I only gave you one copy of the list and it'll appear in the Dominion Post today and next week as a Class II legal publication. And this is just a recap of the delinquent taxes as of April the 30th of 2021 that we collected for the 2020 tax year. And all of this information will be compiled and then turned over to the county clerk's office.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions or?
No.
Basically, do we need to accept this?
Just accept it.
Move to accept the report.
Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda is calling grants. No grants? Correspondence.
I actually didn't receive any correspondence unless you all did.
There's nothing on the agenda. I did forward the one, the December Mon County Health Department COVID schedule. If we can make that available to anybody that wants it from the commission, we'll make that available. But it's basically their schedule for testing and for vaccine vaccinations through the end of December, so what the dates are because of the holidays. I was over there on Thanksgiving week on Monday and they, there's two or three people that were traveling and came to the regularly scheduled testing, which wasn't occurring. So I asked them to provide the schedule and they have provided it. So at the minimum, if we make sure we provide a copy to Dominion Post so that they can make that available. Also not on the agenda was the request from ON EMS, the email that we received from ON EMS.
Well, because that was after the agenda was finalized.
What's that?
That was after the agenda was finalized.
Yes, yes. So it's not on the agenda, but we did, it's in regards to the recent incident where the multiple EMS, EMTs were, one was stabbed and the others were cut, so they were asking for body armor. So I would suggest that we put that in our ARP file and have a discussion about that later. Any other agenda? Commissioner Bloom, do you have any correspondence that's on there?
Nope, not for me either.
All right. Unfinished business, none. New business. Consideration to approve changes to the magisterial district boundary lines in Montague County as proposed on November 3rd, 2021. Clerk Lenny, do you want to come and read the order that you've presented us with?
I can. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Part of the redistricting process and the duty for the county commission is to update the magisterial boundary lines based upon the 2020 census populations. You did that and our office has been working with the planning commission and we thank them very much for all of their help and West Virginia GIS. And we presented to the commission on November the 3rd, a proposal to move two small portions of the current magisterial districts to adjust them for population. And you all approved that notice. Our office present, put together maps and we have posted those maps at three of the libraries, the Cheek Lake Library, the Clinton District Library and the Morgantown Public Library. And those were posted for almost 30 days, well over the 14 days requirement under the code. And we also advertised it in the newspaper. And our office has received a couple of phone calls, just basic, from citizens who wanted to see where they could see the maps and that, but we've not received any complaints. The two small portions were the, what we know is precinct 76 currently, which is basically timberline apartments. We moved that area into the central magisterial district. And we took a portion of precinct 38, which covers the Brookhaven Tyrone Road area. And we moved it, everything south of Route 7, we moved into the western district from the eastern district. So those were the two minor changes. So the order before you today, now that it's been properly noticed to the public, the order before you today is, at a regularly scheduled meeting held on November the 3rd, the county commission issued a notice of intent to change the boundary lines of the magisterial districts within the county effective on December 1st, 2021. The notice was properly advertised in the newspaper, posted at the libraries in each of the magisterial districts in the county as required by code, and posted at the courthouse for more than the required 14-day period to allow for public viewing and comment. The commission hereby orders the boundary lines for the magisterial districts to be changed so that part of precinct 38 comprised of the area between West Virginia State Route 7 and Summer School McKinnick Cave Road to the Preston County line will now be within the western magisterial district. And the area of precinct 76 will now be within the area of the central magisterial district. So that order would just require a motion by the county commission to support.
Motion to approve the order as presented. Any other discussion?
Now, I want to thank you because when we first looked at it, we had looked at some major changes. And this is a very simple change and we appreciate all the work because I know it took a while to figure that out once we got all the information.
Well, you're quite welcome. The next step to the redistricting process, which we have been working on for the past month, is the precinct changes. Unfortunately, those precinct changes are not going to be as easy as our magisterial changes. As you know, the legislature mandated single-member house districts and there are six House of Delegate districts in Montague County now and two senatorial districts. Unfortunately, because we adhere to municipal boundary lines and House of Delegate District boundary lines and Senate District boundary lines, and because of the way the legislature drew their House of Delegate lines and Senate District lines, it has caused some splintering, I will say, of our precincts because you cannot have more than one house and senate district composed in a precinct. And so we are running into areas, especially around some municipalities, that did not have their precinct or their census maps up to date. And then the legislature did not use the most current information. So we've been running into some difficulty about that. But our hope is that we will have something to present to you during a work session next week. And with the hopes that you will be able to give a notice of those precinct changes to the public at your meeting on December 15th. The requirement under the law is that we have to have those completed prior to January the 22nd. And so if we give notice on the 15th, then you can make the order for those precinct changes at your meeting on January the 19th. And that would put us in compliance with the law. But that is our, that is our goal, fingers crossed.
Just a unique question. Do they not open up in January for the election process to run? What happens if we're in that three-week period and they're in one district and then you're moved to another? What happens there?
The precincts don't, I'll let them know.
Yeah, the precincts does not affect where a candidate can run. The notice of the House of Delegate boundaries and the notice of the Senate boundaries was posted by the legislature in October. And so those met the requirement, so anyone.
And what we're doing today sets the limits for magisterial.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so anyone who is interested in being a candidate for, on the ballot in 2022, the filing period does open up on January the 10th, runs through January the 29th. But all of those districts have already been posted. So anyone who is interested in running can contact our office, can look online, can find out what district they would be eligible to run in. What we're working on with the precincts affects the voters. And who will be on the voter's ballot based upon where the voter lives and their residence address. And that's going to be, that's the most challenging part and that's going to be the part where the voters are going to be more confused because their ballots are not going to look like their ballots have in the past, so.
Thank you for the clarification. Now I understand so when someone called, okay.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you very much for all your efforts, Carrie, you and your office. Thanks to the efforts of the GIS Planning Commission, GIS Mike Paul and his people and the other, out of the other individuals that you used from the Geological Survey.
Yes, State GIS.
Yes.
And Mike Paul and Patty in the Planning Commission has been valuable. Scott Isles in our elections and voter registration and Cal and Taylor, they have all worked every day. We are working on reviewing those maps, reviewing the census material, and they have, they have worked tirelessly to try to put this together. So it's a, it's a large undertaking, but we appreciate you working with us and understanding that it's, it doesn't happen overnight, so thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes. All right, consider for approval appointment to the Montague County Solid Waste Authority.
We've received application from a Mr. Michael McCawley. It's spelled M-C-C-A-W-L-E-Y. And I spoke to him, he submitted his application a while back and I did speak to him recently and he is still interested in serving, so.
So moved.
Second.
And I looked over his resume, it's pretty impressive. He has a BA in biology, a master in science of engineering and a PhD in environmental health, so I think that'd be a great asset for the Solid Waste Authority. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Consider for approval appointment to the Deckers Creek Public Service District.
Mr. Fred Friend has been serving for a while and he wants to continue. His term actually expired yesterday and these are six-year terms.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, okay. And again, I appreciate Mr. Friend's service to the Public Services District. We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve the request for funding by the Morgantown JC's alumni and friends and Mon Wireless Ham Radio Club for certain costs associated with the 2021 Christmas Parade. The request is, in the letter that's in our file, was a $650 request. Part of that, I believe, 400 was for the services of the group to film it, which is great for everybody that can't participate in person and to obviously be able, you know, it'll be out there forever for people to go back and view if they have kids there in the parade. So that's one thing. And then the other part of it is some associated costs, so do we have a motion?
To make the signs for the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Request is approved. Consider for approval requisition number 55 to University Town Center Economic, Town Center Administrative Expense Fund.
This requisition is for $2,818.75 and this is the monthly requisition for Municap.
Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consideration to approve request by Montague County 4H for use of the courthouse square on December 6th, 2021 for the holiday caroling during the Christmas parade. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, this is yearly and I appreciate, good to see the parade and the 4H will be back this year. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, consideration to award project regarding RFP 2021 MCC-CRP 001. I want to note that we've been doing our due diligence to ensure the low bid was technically responsive to all specifications of the RFP. And that process continues. We still have a, one other item that we need to verify and that's going to require a site visit on Friday with the contractors. So I would recommend that we table this item till next week. So. Who wants to have a motion to approve?
Move to table.
Second.
Okay, all those, Renata, anything else to add on that?
No, sir.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Consideration of approval of a term sheet for the issuance by the county commission of its tax increment revenue bonds in the amount not to exceed $21,500 to pay costs associated with the design, acquisition, construction and equipment of infrastructure and site improvements in Harmony Grove Property Tax Increment Finance District and the purchase of such bonds by N Route Properties LLC. Before we take a motion, Glenn, do you have anything that you want to add?
Not really.
Okay.
Here's some moral support.
But thank you. And I do, I want to suggest clarity in the motion because we received this term sheet at 1:00 last night and our bond counsel did ask us to allow some flexibility in the motion so that, they suggest that the motion be to approve the term sheet substantially in the form as presented with discretion being given for any final major changes to be approved by the president of the commission.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion's approved.
Commissioner, Jason Turner from Step Toon Johnson's on the phone. I don't know if he.
Oh. Jason, do you have anything else to add?
I can provide any background that the commission may want on this if needed, but if not, we can, I think your motion is correct and we can move on.
Okay, all right. Sorry, Jason, I didn't realize you were there.
Yeah, no, I'm here.
All right, well, thank you very much. I think we're, I don't know if you guys want any further. Okay, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider for approval a letter of support for the EDA Competitive Tourism Grant being submitted by the Mountain Park Foundation regarding the proposed Action Sports Complex. Renata, did you resolve the clarification?
Yes, now they are requesting a resolution in addition to a letter of support. So I've asked them to prepare a draft of resolution that they would want to have passed and they will present that to me here shortly next week. It'll be on your agenda.
Okay, so we'll just put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
And there's no deadline or anything like that?
I asked if that was going to put them in a bind and they said no, that next week would be fine.
Okay, so we do have the letter of support that's on the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, and just for clarification, we were on the line with Green County. They are approving it and we've also sent it to several other local counties so that we have all the support from the neighboring counties.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's all the agenda has for new business, there's nothing else, correct, Renata?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's enough. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors. Mr. Gasprey, our planning office?
Good morning. Thank you very much. Andrew Gasprey, Director of Planning, Montague County. A couple of weeks ago, can you hear me with this or?
You can take it off if you want.
A couple of weeks ago, I suggested to the county commission a timeline for rolling out the proposed subdivision ordinance. We have had requests from the development community to delay this rollout, some friendly, some less friendly. Since I have been here and asked to make this ordinance work, the process has been open and cooperative and any reasonable requests have been integrated into the ordinance despite the challenges that sometimes has presented. In the past, the county commission has made it clear that this is not a race to get an ordinance adopted and as such, we have respected requests where possible. To this end, it would be my recommendation that we extend yet again the deadline for feedback at least one month. However, I strongly suggest that this extension be limited. I point out that the vague complaints or critiques I have received at this point appear related to items that have been in the posted version, the draft for ordinance for over two years. And yet, nothing concrete has been proposed to correct or fix the language to date. Nonetheless, I am here to embrace any improvement. I feel I should stress that I'm a bit surprised that some in the development community are so opposed to this ordinance. It is not zoning. It does not limit what can be built where, only whatever a development chooses to build, that it have the appropriate infrastructure to serve it. It must be acknowledged that the county relies on the development community to build that infrastructure, but we want it to be done properly as it ends up costing the county a lot of money to repair poorly done infrastructure, confer the orphan road program among other things. Furthermore, we feel that this ordinance supports good development. To produce good infrastructure requires coordination and cooperation with its surrounding area. It can't be done on an individual, isolated development. Many developers complain that neighboring developments cut corners and that they bear the brunt of this and that they have to cut costs to compete. We feel this ordinance improves this situation. Thus, we feel this ordinance is a boon to good developers and good development. It was designed to support the good development patterns we have seen in the county and to prevent bad. Nonetheless, the ordinance may contain things that do not work or do not work well. Please take this time to improve those elements, anyone who is interested in this extension. Not simply attack without reading the document. I thank you all in advance. I am here to answer any questions.
I actually have a question. I was.
Do we need to suspend the rules or?
Oh, yeah, well, this isn't, no, I don't think so because this isn't part of.
That's fine.
Yeah, my only question is, I was taken back by the letter that you shared with us from Steve Prunty. And he has some specific concerns. And I guess my question is, the one that I'm wondering is, the one big one they keep bringing up is that this firm did not follow Chapter 36B of the West Virginia Code or there were some substantial conflicts with current state law. Is there a way you could, we can request that specific question? Because if we paid all that money for the consultants, I'd like to see their response to that specific argument because that's to me the biggest concern I see through this whole thing. And I'd just like a response because sure, it's one side saying it. I'd like to see someone else responding to those specific concerns. And I think you even stated that, you know, you were asking for what and I'd like to see what the consultants, and I'd like to throw that to the other two, is that fair to? That seems to be my big question on all this.
Again, I'll let Andrew respond, but I believe that what Mr. Prunty was, in conversations with Andrew, had offered to help fix that, he was just stating that he was going to need more time and I think that's still, still what is occurring, correct?
That's what I hope to occur, yes.
But I'd like to see what the consultants at least response because I think if we pay them, I'd like to see what they're going to respond.
Because I have reached out to the consultants already. They would like a little bit more specifics than just, I mean, their large ordinances.
Yeah, okay, as long as you've reached out. Okay, I thought that would be something so that we have information to see both sides of the discussion, which is what we've been wanting all along.
Absolutely.
That's all I, question.
Okay, well, thank you. You hit it on the head when you said this isn't a race to just push something out. We've never been under a specific timeline. My only issue is we don't put it in a drawer for time's sake. We don't push it aside. We don't allow it to just be delayed just to be delayed. You know, each of us represents a magisterial district which we just approved today. We don't represent developers. We represent the people of this county and that's what people need to understand that, you know, three or four or five developers, you know, we cannot only listen to those concerns at the expense of the other 105,000 residents of this county. So we want to have, and in my opinion, we want to have a full and complete public hearing of what the planning commission has been working on with the improvements and we'll have that discussion. And there shouldn't be any fear of having that discussion. We're going to take what's brought to us as a final product. We're going to do its due diligence, just like we do everything else. We're going to have public hearings that are accessible and people can provide their comments. We're going to take those comments and concern. And if it's still a work in progress, it's still a work in progress, but I just want to continue the conversation. I don't want to delay the conversation just for the simple, you know, and I do want honest participation. I don't want it to be delayed just to be delayed or I don't want people to say nothing just so they can wait till we put it up for hearing and then come to try to, you know, I want them to be part of the process, not to fight against the process. So that's really all my concern is. And it's just like when we had conversations, when we had the issues with the health department, you know, don't, don't confuse my admiration for the process as to have been, you know, take that as I've made a decision or any of us have made the decision. We just want the process to have its fair due. I mean, this has been something that's been tossed around for 50 years. And it seems to take, you know, every two years, it seems to take a hiatus and then, you know, it's brought up and then it's not talked about for, you know, when the next election comes up. And I don't want us to delay that. I want us to keep having this conversation. So thank you for your efforts and thank you for your willingness to work with the, with the public to try to get something that works for everybody.
If I may just add one other thing, this is not easy to do. A lot of the requests that we have had and integrated are based on flexibility and any time you ask for flexibility. anytime you ask for flexibility in a legal document, it makes it very challenging. So we know that there may be some issues in putting in some of the things that development community has asked to be put in, but we think it's really good that we're having that dialogue. So I couldn't agree more. Thank you very much for your support in that, and we do, in order to make this work, the people who use it have to be able to read it, understand it, and help us get it right.
Yeah, and even to the point of if something is approved, there's still a review process, and there's still refinement process. It's, you know, this is meant to be an ongoing conversation and work with the community, with the developers to better our county.
Yes, agree, totally.
Mon County is the jewel, everybody wants to be here, everyone wants to be here developing. I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that we don't just let that happen, you know, unfeathered without some sort of making sure that it's in the best interest of everybody that lives in this county.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, anybody else, any other department heads or supervisors? Okay, move on to reports from county commissioners. I think it's turn to do this. Jeff, go ahead.
Sure. Just proud to announce that my nine-year-old got her second dose of the vaccine yesterday, and my wife got her booster, so our family is completely vaccinated to the max, I guess you could say. I just say that to encourage everyone to please go get your shots if you're medically able to do so, and I'm sure Sean will remind you of the three W's. This Omicron variant is, I haven't heard of the word Omicron since I was pledging to fraternity, I had to learn the Greek alphabet. But apparently, we've gotten so far down the road, we're to Omicron, so hopefully it won't be as bad as it purports to be, but let's just please be diligent, be careful, get our shots, and hopefully we can move on from this nightmare that's been going on for two years now.
Thanks. Tom?
Yeah, I wasn't here last week, I was in Philadelphia, and as I would say, my wife liked to go shopping, my family liked to do historical events, and I went to every seafood restaurant I could find, and that's what I did for five days, so I really enjoyed it. And I also happened to notice that when I wasn't here, the meeting only took 15 minutes, so I think that also says when I opened my mouth.
14, Tom.
14, sorry. But last night, or yesterday morning, the Greater Morgantown CVB met, and they wanted to pass on to the three of us that, for the first time in three years, we were in the block because the county commission stood by the CVB and helped them for almost a year, and they were very appreciative, and because of that, everything is looking up greatly for CVB, and also they were able to hire people back, and I just wanted, they wanted to pass on their thank you, and very appreciative. Also, what people don't realize, this community is amazing. Last night, I met with Cub Scout Pack 64 of the community UMC church in Ridgedale, and one of their Cub Scouts, Tyler Davis, decided that he wanted to collect some food, convinced another friend, and then all the Cub Scouts in that area, 76 of them, collected food. They brought in three pallets, pallets stacked this high of food. It was unbelievable, they brought in two trailers, and it was just so great to see not only the Cub Scouts doing it, but the community and everyone getting involved, and that's just so, that's just what says about our community. And finally, everyone gets to say Merry Christmas, while I get to say Happy, and you have to say it, Hanukkah, and I wish everyone a happy Hanukkah. Thank you.
Same to you, Tom, thank you. Yeah, Jeff's right, we, I know that it's in the back of our minds, but we can't let our guard down in regards to these COVID numbers and what's coming down, I mean, we know it's only a matter of time, and we've been watching the national, we've been watching the national surge starting, and we know we're always about two, three weeks outside of that. Our numbers in this county have been plateauing around the 25 per hundred thousand dollar, for hundred thousand number. They've been going down a little bit in the past week, but then they trickle back up. They haven't been able to leave the 20 to 25 area, we've just been kind of stuck, but we've also been kind of going about our business too, and we've been able to have parades and have full football seasons, and so I think we've kind of, we're learning to live with it, but we can't forget when we have other things like a new variant coming that we just need to be extra vigilant. So as we always say, your three W's, wash your hands, wash your dishes, and wear your mask. In that regard, also, I want to point out that the schedule that we talked about from the Health Department, it, you know, the public needs to be aware of that, and, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull it up as we're going through, needs to be aware of it, needs to take that into consideration. Go, get your shot, get your booster, if you want to go get tested, I'm twice vaccinated, I've been jabbed three times with the booster, and I still go get tested every other week if, you know, for whatever reason I was around somebody that had a cold or something like that. You go in, in five minutes you get your test, in two or three hours you get your result. It's just a way of being extra careful, so it's really about personal responsibility. Everybody's got to take responsibility for them and their family, and I think we'll eventually get through this, but we can't forget about it. I hope everybody had a nice, long, our employees and our citizens had a nice, long Thanksgiving break. Now we're kind of in the holiday mode, and that's good. We've done a lot of hard work this year, so, you know, we're looking forward to the holidays. So having said that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, adjourned.